We'll start at 6:31. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 16th, 2021 Milford Planning Board Meeting. We'll start with our emergency preamble. Good evening. As Chairman of the Milford Planning Board, I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91- A colon 2, comma 3B, Roman numeral 3B, federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. This meeting is imperative to continued operation of town and government services which are vital to public safety and confidence. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Please keep in mind that the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. If the disruptive behavior continues thereafter, that person shall be removed from the meeting. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting must and will be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance. When each member states their name, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So, let's see. Paul Amato?
Paul Amato is here, and I'm alone in the room.
And Paul's a planning board member. Janet Langdale, planning board member.
Janet Langdale is here, alone in the room.
Susan Robinson, planning board member.
Susan Robinson is here, alone in the room.
Tim Finan, planning board vice chair.
Tim Finan, I'm here and alone in the room.
I'm Doug Knott. I'm the planning board chair, and I'm alone in the room as well.
Mr. Chair, Pete Bessler is coming, but he's running late.
Okay, thank you. Let me see here. Where's my agenda? In light of the COVID-19 social distancing advice made by the governor and the CDC, the town of Milford, following a declaration of emergency by the planning board chair, me, is providing meeting participation via telephone conference for your safety. If you would like to participate in the meeting conference, please call from home the following number, 646-558-8656, and enter the meeting ID, 818-5386-2361, and the password 05142020. Or log in via the Zoom app at zoom.com using the meeting ID and password above. You may also follow on using the digital copy from our website. And that's the copy of the today's documents. And the website is www.milford.nh.gov forward slash planning dashboard, forward slash agenda, forward slash planning dash board dash 16 F E B 2021. We will also be live streaming the meeting on Granite Town Media, Government Channel 21. And the website for that is gtm.milford.nh.gov forward slash cable cat, excuse me, cable cast public site, forward slash watch, forward slash to question mark, channel equals two. Okay. And also attending our meeting is from planning board staff. We have Darlene Buffard and our new town planner, Jason Kleckhorn. Tonight, we have, well, we had two public hearings. The first one, I'll announce it, but it has, there's been a continuance request till April 20th, 2021. That's case SP Samuel Paul, 2021-03. Zachary Clark, applicant owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan and conditionally use permit to construct a 1,300 square foot building to be used as a home industry-based business parcels located at 557 Route 13 South in the residential R zoning district, tax map 47 lot 39. Again, this has been, there's a request to continue till April 21st, 2021. May I have a motion to continue? With the application to be re-noticed in the paper, two letters, there's an email.
So move.
Second.
Motion to accept continuance request by Tim Finan, second by Paul Amato, all in favor? Susan? You're muted, Susan.
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Janet?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
And Doug, I think the answer to your question is no, that it wouldn't be necessarily be re-noticed.
Why not?
Well, a butters wouldn't be notified. Let's put it that way.
I read something about that they would be, though.
In the request from the applicant.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yep.
Okay.
This is actually the second continuance standard, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
Yeah, I don't think so. But yeah, if they're, if they're gonna do it, that's great. I don't think I saw that piece of paper. Thank you.
Jason, there was an email. Did you want me to read that?
Through, through the chair, if you'd like to read that email into the record from the applicant's representative, that would be fine, Mr. Chairman.
I can't seem to find it. I will read it. I didn't see it on the doc, the website documents.
It came from Lincoln 545 tonight, Doug.
I haven't, I can, it's up to you. I can read it, or do you?
I feel like I should read it. I just want to find it. Came in at 545, Tim?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay. All right. This is from Carl D. Foley, Fieldstone Land Consultants. Says, it's dated February 10th, 2021. And it's to Lincoln Daly, Michael D. Ploof, Andrew Dyer, or C. Seed. And the subject is application continuance to April 20th, 2021. The email reads as follows, "Good morning, Lincoln. This is to confirm that Zachary Clark, that the Zachary Clark application will be continued to the April 20th, 2021 planning board meeting. This will require re-notification of the butters and revised minor site plan. And a revised minor site plan will be provided as well at the proper time prior to the meeting, period. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Best regards, Carl D. Foley, Senior Project Manager, Fieldstone Land Consultants." That's the end of that email. All right, so we'll move to the next item on our agenda, item number 2B, case Sarah Paul, SP 2021-02, B is in Bob, 33, Lordens Plaza, comma LLC owner in St. Mary's Bank applicant. This is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to renovate the existing bank building on the newly subdivided parcel with an additional bank drive aisle and 182 square foot building expansion. The parcels are located at 586 Nashua Street in the commercial zoning district, tax map 44, lot 6. And this was, this is continued from a January 19th, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion to accept the application?
Removed.
Second.
Motion to accept application by Paul Amato, second by Tim Finan, all in favor, Susan Robinson?
Hi.
Janet Langdale?
Hi.
Paul Amato?
Hi.
Tim Finan?
Hi.
Chair votes, I, motion passes. Let me break in for one second. Jason, as soon as Peter arrives, please let me know, but I don't think we'll be able to see them right away because we're in the middle of an application.
Okay.
Now I have a motion regarding potential regional impact.
I'll make a motion.
I think we did that last time for the site plan, for the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that has been done previously, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I thought.
I thought it was just a conceptual the last time.
Yeah, so did I.
According to the staff notes, we, we approved the subdivision, but not the site plan.
I, I had that on your cheat sheet, and Lincoln took it off, so.
I'm very disappointed. Well, then, I guess we do not, if, is it actually? So that is the case?
I don't, I don't see what it would hurt if to do it again.
Well, as long as, are we sure that it was done? Tim, you said it was in the notes.
It was in the staff notes.
Okay.
But I don't honestly remember. I remember there being two potential applications, a lot line adjustment and a site plan.
It should be in the minutes.
I don't think those were the minutes that we got this week, though.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're on today's agenda.
Those minutes are?
Yeah, January 19th.
So efficient.
It, it says Lincoln has in his staff report that it was determined on the 19th.
Okay. In that case, we have, we've already had a vote on potential regional impact, so we will move on to Jason or, Jason, can you make sure that your butters list is read, are written, please?
This is my first time doing this. There are 75 of them. Shall, shall I read just the name or the name and the address, Mr. Chairman?
Name and address, please. Sorry.
Christopher Dodge, 590, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Scotty and Sharon Ames, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Deborah Belanger and Deborah King, 61 Ponomah Hill Road, Milford. Cliff and Kathy Hilton, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Kathleen Seaman and Wayne Bernard, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Ryan Kears, 237 High Range Road, Londonderry. Buildstone Land Consultants, 206 Elm Street, Milford. Allison Lamy, P O Box 6212, Amherst. Pamela Elaine, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Michael and Gail Mandra, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Ethel Lacoste, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Randall Booley, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Mark and Roberta Langus, 529 Nashua Street, Milford. Peter Burdo, 529 Nashua Street, Milford.
Jason?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Are you, is that the butters list for the first application or for the second?
I guess I.
I think that's the.
Yeah.
Well, because last I checked, I don't think I had 75 butters on mine.
Yeah, the, Lincoln also took that. I'm sorry, Darlene, if you could strike that from the minutes for the record, I apologize. I believe that was done also last time. He also took that off of this.
But if, if that's the tenants in the apartment building, the only a butter is the apartment building owner, is that, is that not true? We've never read tenants off before as a butters.
Okay, I, I have them here if you would like for me to read these, but Lincoln indicated that was also done last time.
That, my understanding, just, just because Jason wasn't here at the last meeting, my recollection was both of these applications were reviewed and deemed complete by this board. We actually went through, it was, it was not a conceptual. It was a full site plan application along with a subdivision accordingly. And really, the only items that were left to discuss were two specific items. You guys actually reviewed the entire site plan application.
Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Pat Mc, Patrick McHugh here for St. Mary's Bank as well. That's correct. And I was just looking through the draft minutes that are on the town's website. And, and it indicates we received full subdivision approval and a conditional approval on the site plan.
That is, that is correct. And I, I want to apologize. I didn't even know about reading the butters until about 30 minutes before the meeting. I'm not familiar with this process at all, so I, I apologize about, for that, for that part.
No, it's fine. We, I, I remember that now, too, that we, we gave up, and it's in recorded in the minutes, so, fine. Let's move on. So, all right, Doug, are you gonna present?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the record, my name is Doug McGuire, and I'm with the debate group, and I'm here representing the applicant St. Mary's Bank, as well as the property owner of Lordens Plaza. So, just as a quick reminder, this was a, a site redevelopment plan. We have an existing bank on the property, and really, the goal was just to upgrade and update the site, adding in an additional drive-through aisle and a slight modification to the square footage of the building. The, the, the takeaway of the last meeting was there were two items which were brought to my attention that you, that, that the board members would like us, would have liked us to look into. And one of those was specifically regarding the parking of the overall plaza on the Eastern Plaza, just to make sure, because we were eliminating a few parking spaces as part of our redevelopment, just to make sure that the parking was acceptable with the loss of those spaces. And what we have done is we've prepared a, a parking memorandum, and I don't know if that's in your packets. And what that, basically what that shows is it shows all the existing uses within that vicinity, within that parking area, as well as the parking that's supplied for the bank, and we are slightly over the parking requirement, so. And that's assuming the reduction in the few spaces that we eliminated as part of expanding the, the drive-through lanes. So, there should be no issue with regards to parking, and I think that was just something we wanted to make sure before you guys move forward with any action on this application. The other item you brought up was regarding signage. And at this time, we have submitted a full sign application package. Sousa Signs has submitted that, and that is in receipt by the town. I'm happy to share my screen and show the board members that piece if, if you would so like to review. But it is pretty straightforward. We, we remove the complication. And, and I think, if you recall, during our last discussion, there was some consideration of an additional pylon sign, and that would end up having two pylon signs on the same site. In discussing that with St. Mary's, they are comfortable moving forward with just the existing pylon sign, adding their name to that. And, and so that we're not, will not be proposing at this time any additional pylon sign. The signage on the building, which again, I, it, I'll just quickly, if you want me, I, I guess I'm gonna need permission to do that, but if, if you'd like me to share that, I can show you that signage. But it's, it's in the same locations and of the same signage size of the, as the previous bank.
Can I just show it?
Sure. Could the host allow me to screen share? Thank you. So here you have it. This is the, the building with, you know, with, with its reskinning based on the architectural plans, and you can see, this is, there was an existing sign here on this face of the building, and then a small one over the doorway. And so this is what we're, what we're proposing. If there's obviously any specific questions, we do have the sign vendor on, on the Zoom with us tonight to answer any questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward and obviously intending to follow all of your applicable signage requirements.
So the size of this meets the requirements in our sign ordinance?
Yes, and, and what, actually, your signage ordinance allows for the use of grandfathering on an existing signage on a building. And so even though there is two signs on this face, it's our interpretation of those regulations that that would be allowed because we are not making those any larger than what was existing. So essentially, a grandfathered use on the signage, and that was Ben, that was how it was submitted in the application that was delivered to Lincoln last week.
Well, I, I personally applaud you for going this route and not putting another monument sign out by the road and confusing the issue a little bit more. I think these signs will be very visible as you drive past. And the people that were going to the bank across the street will know to come over here.
Yep, I, I would agree.
Yeah, here.
It's like a nice facelift to the building. Very, the board have any comments? Questions for the applicant?
When I received the package earlier, I thought it looked very attractive, very balanced.
There's, um, from the, the packet of the information we have, the staff doesn't have any issues?
The, the only, the only, and it's not even an outstanding issue, but there, there is the matter of, because if you recall that previously, this parcel was, was done through a minor subdivision to sort of split this, this lot off of the, the parent parcel. There are some easements that our staff, myself and Lincoln are in review from the applicant. But, but those are private civil matters, and they're not, they will be completed before the final recordation of this project. Did I, did I say that correctly?
Sounds like it.
Yes, Mr. Kleckhorn, too. This is Attorney Pat McHugh, and for the chairman and the members of the planning board, I spoke to Lincoln twice last week about the, it's called a, we have a declaration of covenants and reciprocal easements, and I think Lincoln's all set with them based on our conversations of last week. So we'll, we'll certainly follow up with them, assuming you'd be gracious enough, and we get unconditional approval tonight, we'll follow up with Lincoln to finalize everything after the meeting. And, and Jason as well. Sorry.
Other than that, the applicant did an excellent job of presenting their case, and we, we don't have anything to add.
So it looks like Jason and Lincoln have that under the staff recommendations for approval, so. That's the one item.
Yeah, finalize all access.
Yeah.
Egress, stormwater, maintenance easements prior to recordation.
Yeah.
So, yeah. While the sat, if there's no further remarks from the board, I'll open it up to the public. The board, all set for the moment? Okay, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public. If you're in a butter, or if you have a, you're a citizen, want to make a comment, please let us know if you, who you are, your address, if you're a butter or not. If you're on Zoom, you can click the raise your hand button. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Jason, do you concur?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting, and if the board does not have any further questions or comments.
Doug?
Yes?
One question.
Yep.
To, to Doug, the other Doug. I'm looking at the memo that we received relative to the Eastern Park Plaza parking calculations and the inclusion of the bank parking in the total number. If I'm reading this correctly, it's sorry about that, excluding the bank, the requirement, the requirement would be for something like 75 parking spots? Is that correct?
Uh, that, that sounds, that sounds correct. I can pull that up for the board members.
Yeah. Is there a cross easement for parking between the two lots?
Yes, absolutely. And that was, that was one of the pieces. So you're, you're correct. I don't want to speak for you, but you're probably referring to the fact that we're, we're looking at this in aggregate as opposed to by individual use?
Well, I don't care about the aggregate for the rest of the plaza. I was excluding the, the bank parking since you had the separate lot. And that's the 19.2. So basically, I just want to understand this to make sure that I'm clear on the thinking that the remaining parking there is 76.8 based on your numbers. 75 are required.
Yes, and, and we do have, we do have reciprocal easements with regards to parking, so the intent is that even though we have a separate subdivision, if, if a tenant or if a customer is looking to, you know, say, park in the bank area and then walk to, to the Subway restaurant or something like that, that's all, that's all permitted as part of the, the covenant and the easements. And if there's anything specific on that, obviously, Pat can, can speak to that.
No, thank you for just bringing that forward, for clarifying it, and for confirming that there is an easement for parking across the two. Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing else? We get a motion to?
So Doug, we, just to refresh my memory, did we, did we approve the subdivision in January?
So, are you referring to?
Well, we have to do a subdivision and a site plan here, right?
The, the subdivision plan was conditionally approved. My understanding from the previous applicant, from the previous meeting was that the, the intent, I thought, was that the site plan was going to be conditionally approved with the condition that we return and address these two remaining items. But I think, I think that may not be how it was presented in your packets, so I, I'm confident that the subdivision is approved, but it may be a good idea to approve the site plan. And let, and Pat, what's your take on that?
Yes, the, the site plan was approved, excuse me, the subdivision was approved with, with only one condition being that monuments be placed, which we agreed with without a problem. And we had conditional approval for the site plan. And what we're looking for tonight is that the site plan be approved without further conditions, other than to finalize the easement document with the town.
Correct.
I thought it was approved awaiting parking clarification.
Yeah, the, the minutes reflect basically what was just said, except for that the site plan was, was continued until this week, pending the answer to those questions. But it's semantics. But yes, the, the the lot line, some changes were approved.
So if that's the case, then it's not gonna hurt to, to approve the site plan again with the one stipulation left is the town, town and applicant final review of the easements for egress, access, stormwater maintenance, easements, and including parking. So I'd make that a motion.
Their second motion by by Paul Amato, second by Janet Langdale, all in favor, Susan Robinson?
Hi.
Tim Finan?
Hi.
Janet Langdale?
Hi.
Paul Amato?
Hi.
Chair votes, I, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of St. Mary's, we appreciate it. Thank you.
We're looking forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is we have, is there any other business? Before I get to the minutes?
I think we have the condo.
I think we have the condo, um.
We have another.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I just missed it. I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on with me tonight. You're right. I'm sorry. Uh, item C, case SD two zero two one dash zero one. TFF Realty LLC owner applicant, review for acceptance and consideration. The final approval for a condominium conversion of a previously approved nine-unit multifamily development. Subject property is located tax map forty-three, lot sixty-one, thirty-four Panama Hill Road in the Residence Eight District. May have a motion to accept the application.
Doug, before you go on, our, our thing says dash oh four, you said oh one.
That's what I'm reading. So, okay. Uh, mine says oh one.
Okay, so darling.
Which is it?
Whatever it is.
No, which is it? I want to make sure it's correct.
It's supposed to be oh four.
Okay, so, uh.
Mine says one also.
Case SD two zero two one dash oh four is the correct title. So the application's complete. We have a motion to accept.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion to accept by Janet Langdale, second by Tim Finan, all in favor? Susan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a motion for potential regional impact.
I'm, I'll make a motion that there's no potential regional impact associated with this application.
Second.
Motion of no potential regional impact by Janet Langdale, second by Paul Mato, all in favor? Tim?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, Jason, can you read the abutters, please?
Allison Lammy, PO Box sixty-two twelve Amherst. Pamela Elaine, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Michael and Gail Mandra, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Ethel Lacoste, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Randall Booley, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Mark and Roberta Lengus, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Peter Burdow, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Keith and Tara Kerstad, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Robert and Rain Maurice, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Ronald and Aubrey Bright, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Marilyn and Tracy Nadeau, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Joseph and Linda Gregor, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Joan Holt, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Ronald Emonde, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Sheila K. Terrell trustee, Terrell One Family Trust, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Glenn Caldwell, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Andrea Brandt, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Charlie Pietro, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Paul Taylor, Melanie Gibson, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Benjamin Mazer, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Glenna Daniels, trustee of the Glenna Daniels Revocable Trust, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Gloria Pelletier, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Arthur Pino, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Daniel and Karen Kirfman, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Vincent Gerast, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Robert Cook and Jean Harris, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Sharon Salvucci, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Peter Carlson, trustee of the Peter K. Carlson Family Revocable Trust, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Del Van Valkenburg, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Carl Fontaine, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Janet Van Valkenburg, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Cheryl A. Kelsey and Eric Goldberg, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Chris Langless and Laurie Chadburn, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Mark and Deborah Tremblay, trustees of the Mark and Deborah Tremblay Trust, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. TFF Realty, New Ipswich, PO Box two eighty-nine. Frederick and Celia Lord and Trust, seventy-one Pepperell Road, Brooklyn. Robert and Stephanie Coco. Forty-one Summer Street Melford. RSK Realty, four eighty Nashville Street Melford. Brian Murdoch, twenty-three eighteen Booth Road, Honolulu, Hawaii. George and Christina in Denoplis, four eighty Nashville Street Melford. Kristin E. Forsley, thirty, thirty-three Lucille Avenue, Salem, New Hampshire. Joan Thompson, twenty-two Panama Hill Road, Melford. Avus Maliquit, Maliquit Family Trust, twelve Acre Street, Haverhill, Mass. Did I get that right? A, Haverhill?
Yeah.
William and Patricia Chalmere, Chalmere Family Revocable Trust. PO Box one ninety-four Wilton. John and Leece Biggle, twenty-two Panama Hill Road, Melford. Grove Street Villas, thirty-seven Tumble Road, Bedford. Holly Putnam, twenty-two Panama Road, Melford. Robert Jelly, fifteen, fifteen Laurel Hill Road, Hollis. Nancy Wajitas, twenty-two Panama Hill Road, Melford. David York, twenty-two Panama Hill Road, Melford. Eric Bedell, twenty-two Panama Hill Road, Melford. So Higgins Valley Manufacturing Corporation, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Robert and Martha Cunningham, three oh six No Marsh Road, Sadbury, New Hampshire. Stuart and Joyce La Ponse, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Robert Root, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Carl Couture, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Michael Scarpato, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Florence Quast, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Charlene Dearborn, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Rebecca Hart, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Elizabeth Scaltrato, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Carl Bosley, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Jason Van Valkenburg, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Goldie Batchelder, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Gordon Daniels, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Ernest Coat, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Kelly Latorno, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Lawrence Wells, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Christopher Dodge, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Scotty and Sharon Ames, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Deborah Ballinger and Deborah King, five fifty, sixty-one Panama Hill Road, Melford. Cliff and Kathy Hilton, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Kathleen Seaman and Wayne Bernard, five twenty-nine Nashville Street Melford. Ryan Keers, two thirty-seven High Range Road, London Dairy. Buildstone Land Consultants, two oh six Elm Street, Melford. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the list of the abutters.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Hi, Peter.
Hello.
You're here.
I just joined and despite the background, I am alone in my room.
All right, so that's Peter Besselier, planning board member, so he's came in time to be seated for this application. All right, is the applicant here? And if you are, please identify yourself and make your presentation.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Pluff. I'm a lance of air with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I'm here tonight to represent, uh, condominium conversion, um, for the, from the site known as Panema Pines, which is tax map parcel forty-three, lot sixty-one, located at thirty-four Panama Hill Road. Uh, presently, uh, this site was approved for a nine-unit multifamily apartment development. And this application is to convert the units into condominiums. We are proposing. We are proposing no changes to the site development plans, uh, that were approved on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty. This application is a subdivision and ownership only per RSA three fifty-six dash B, known as the Condominium Act. Each unit will have limited common areas in the front and in the rear of the units. In the front, there will be two parking spaces per unit. And in the rear, there's a, a small yard area that you can see on the plan is encapsulated by where it says LCA one. So that's limited common area of unit one and limited common area of two and, and so forth down through nine. There's nine units there. Pretty much with that, um, we did submit the, uh, declaration of condominium as a draft document. Um, and I believe, uh, we'll work with, uh, Lincoln, um, and, uh, Jason, um, moving forward to finalize. Certainly open to any questions. It's pretty straightforward. It's, again, it's a, it's a subdivision in ownership, not a subdivision in title. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Each unit was entirely self-sufficient right from the beginning, wasn't it, Mr. Pluff?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Is there any further explanation of the interdepartmental reviews from ambulance?
As, as far as the traversing, um, I believe the rear of the.
I know we talked about it before when the applicant first came in. But I don't see, I could be missing it. I don't see where the snore is, the snore, the snow is intended to be stored.
I can, um, I can add to that if the board would allow me to share a document.
Please do.
Uh, can everyone, uh, see this on the screen here?
Yep.
Um, I'll back out a little bit.
Yeah, we need to back out.
Bear with me, I'm new. Okay, so, um, it was my understanding, I spoke to the engineer today. Um, there was a pre-con, uh, pre-construction meeting that was held and I believe this issue was brought up where if, uh, uh, rescue services were to come in, uh, down through here and they would turn in here and then have to back up. The snow storage area is, is right, right in this area here. And I believe at that meeting, um, per the engineer, that, uh, the snow storage can be pushed back further. And there can be, um, like a gravel, um, kind of like a area right here where the, if the, um, ambulance has to, to back in, they can certainly back in far enough to get a good swing to come back out. That's.
There's, there's no entrance on that end of the building. The entrances are all on the front, correct?
That's correct. All the, right here, uh, along the sidewalk right here. Yeah.
Okay, I was just asking to be clarified, this ambulance was asking for it. I mean, big picture. We, the, the application can only be denied if the conversion affects the land use, so. But I was surprised to see ambulance bringing the snow up again because I thought it had been addressed before, but.
Yeah, I don't know what to tell you, Doug. Mr. Pete, I saw that too and I said, why are they bringing it up? I thought it would have taken, been taken care of.
It's, it, it would seem to me to be just, you know, somebody got some documents for review and it's just a more ideal situation that they're asking for.
Yeah.
You know, in, in the better world, they would love to have access to the back of the building, which is what they asked for before.
Right.
Um, but negotiations, you know, and discussion, um, when the application originally came through, got us to what we see this evening.
Right.
And that's with police, fire and ambulance input.
Mike, did you say that this, that the snow storage portion would be moved back a bit? Is that what you've just said?
Yes, um, I, I guess, uh, it was a, it was spoken about on site and the owner of the property said that he'd be willing to move the snow storage back a bit and just put like a, a gravel, um, area right here, just to give a little more room so vehicles can back into the gravel area and then go out.
So Jason and Lincoln would review, um, an updated plan with that indicated, is that right?
Well, I don't think it was going to be an updated plan. I think it was just going to be part of the, of the discussion. I mean, I mean, honestly, we're here for, for the condo conversion tonight.
Right, that's the primary, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not really reviewing this, the plan again, so. So if there's no further questions, I'll open it to the public. Let me see who's here. All right, so open the public, to the public, if you've got a question or comment, please state your name, address, whether you're a butter or not. After you raise your hand and I recognize. I'm not seeing any movement. Jason, do you concur?
Nancy Wojcosh does.
Oh, okay.
Voydis. Hi, I'm Nancy Voydis. I'm at twenty-two Panama Hill Road, apartment seventeen. I am a butt, in the butter. Um, question for you, is there going to be any fencing between Panima, um, Panima Hill and Panima Pines in the back of the condos? Like a barrier, a fencing barrier?
Applicant will need to.
Yeah, Mike, can you answer that, please?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I pulled up here, I'll share the, um, the site plan again here.
Wasn't that the whole discussion about arborvitae or some type of vegetative?
Yeah, they said they were going to match the arborvitae that, that are along the road.
Okay, I was just looking at the site plan. Honestly, I wasn't present when the, uh, when the site plan was being presented here. So, um, obviously if that was what was agreed to in the, in the meetings, then that's what will be done.
Well, what does the final plan set show?
Actually, I'm looking for, I have the, let me, uh, roll through here.
It looks like vegetation of, of trees running down.
I thought I saw the arborvitae, maybe, uh, maybe I didn't.
Yes, sir.
That's what was discussed, yeah.
I don't, I don't see a landscape plan on what we had today, maybe.
I cannot, I could pull it up, um.
It's, it says, it's got edge of tree line, Mike, um, between. Between the complex.
You look at the first, the first sheet. It does have, I can't read, zoom in more.
It says edge of tree line.
Is this where you're talking along this edge?
Yes.
Okay, so it says proposed dark American arborvitae or equal. So you're correct, there will be, there will be arborvitae along this line right here.
Okay. All right, and also I just wanted to know, um, is there, are you on, that going to be on septic or well water?
Uh, this is on sewer and it's also on, on municipal water.
Town water and sewer.
Okay, sewer and, okay. So in other words, it won't affect any of the, um, water system in, in our development?
No, the, the water's provided by the town.
Should not. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you, uh, Jason, I can't see anymore with the screen sharing. Okay. All right, I don't see any more hands up, so I'll close the public portion of the meeting. And if there's no further questions, comments, we have a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the condominium con- conversion for this plan.
Second.
Motion but, to approve by Paul Mato, second by Susan Robinson, all in favor? Janet?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Bye, Mike.
Bye-bye.
All right, now we'll get back to. Item three, other business. Jason, is there any other business? Any board members have any other business?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Board?
Are we supposed to approve minutes?
That's item number four.
Oh, sorry.
Read your agenda, Paul.
He's going by the cheat sheet.
And I still screwed up. Uh, all right, so let's approve minutes. So the first set of minutes will be from January fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Any corrections? Any corrections?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one as presented.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Susan?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Motion pa- passes unanimously. Minutes for January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I will. I'll move that we, uh, approve the minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one as presented.
It would have helped if I'd have read those beforehand and I'd have known what we were doing with the bank a little bit better.
I was frantically reading them during the meeting.
Somebody please second the motion. Okay. Motion to approve by Tim Finan, second by Paul Mottow. All in favor, Janet?
abstain, they didn't read them, sorry.
Susan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Peter?
I with a request that you, you know, recognize I was promoted. I'm not an alternate member.
Wow.
You got the pay.
That is correct.
Yeah, I got.
That's Darlene's. Opah.
All right, so let's correct that. And then, so do you want to redo the motion with the change?
Sure, as amended.
Okay.
I'll, I would amend my second also.
All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Janet?
Abstain.
Paul?
Yes.
Timothy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, so we have item five, upcoming meetings. March second, we have a work session and, uh, March sixteenth, Tim, I need you to run that, please.
Which date did you say?
March sixteenth.
It's not going to be a snowstorm, is there?
I'm having a partial knee replacement.
Oh.
Wow.
Are you going to shift?
I can take that, right?
Thank you.
We have a very full agenda. We have several items for that meeting, so.
Excellent. Going to request that we don't have many things for that case. That's okay.
So those plans are in now, what, can you give us an idea of what's coming up?
Crosby Town Homes, a not, a six-unit um, multifamily project adjacent to the Wendy's on Elm Street. Oh, uh, uh, chapel, chapel, um, the chapel operation is doing a lot division and a minor subdivision. The garden, sand and gravel mine. And the last case is slipping my, um, it's been a long day, um, but we, we have, we have, we have those three and then another application on, on six. Oh, Star, oh, Starbucks at the plaza that we saw today for St. Mary's Bank, that's it.
Right. Because that one was just conceptual, right? When we talked about that, yeah.
Yeah, so, so those are the, those are the four items for the March sixteenth meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Jason, in case you don't, I'm going to ask Paul, where's this sand and gravel thing?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, it may be the guy that's across the bridge down by Marrows and the new pizza place there at the end of the bypass by John Simonovitz office.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay, in the field.
Yeah. The old apple orchard.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tim, I, I checked the agenda before scheduling my surgery.
It's good of you, Doug.
It was a gift. Um, good, so, all right, well, motion to adjourn then if there's nothing else.
Can I just ask Peter one question? Why does that strange white creature appear on your screen sometimes?
Oh, if I, if I stop the video, that's my, uh, that's, that's the image I have when I stop the video rather than just having a black, it's, um, one of three, uh, small statues of, um, Butler-like, you know, people outside of the hotel, a clap in Beijing. It's just really, that hotel has some fantastic, uh, statuary and artwork throughout the building. And that's.
Susan, if you're talking about the white on the left side of Peter, but the right side of us, it's his arm.
No, it's not.
No, it's, it's his picture, Tim, but his video was off.
No, this, this.
Okay. There you go.
This, Peter.
There you go.
Well, obviously, it sounds like a lengthy discussion, but I certainly won't start it now, another time.
Motion to adjourn, please. I'm moved.
They're moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, aye, aye, aye. All right, motion passes.
Thanks, Jason, good job.
Good job, Jason. Thanks for cheating.
Hi, Jason.